All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call this meeting in order. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Vicki, put something at the top of my agenda so that I remember to remind you guys. To ensure clear audio recordings during meetings, council members should keep their microphones on at all times and lean in and speak directly into their microphone. I might just paraphrase that next time. Turn on your microphones and lean in. Okay, let's see. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Perschmann. I'll second. Second by Councilmember Mack. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, it does not look like we have anyone here for the community comment this evening. So to move on to the presentations and reports, we have Commissioner Fahy. Good evening. How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me. I had given everyone just a copy of Cover County updates for July. A lot of discussion about Highway 212. Really excited about that project, the new bridge at Bungards. We hope that that bridge will be open for traffic by November. And that will just continue to make that a safer intersection. And my friendly advice to everyone is just please slow down in that construction zone from Norwood, Young America, all the way to Cologne. Just a lot of construction happening and just please slow down. Next big project for the county is going to be Highway 5. Making that a four lane from Highway 41 to Victoria with some pedestrian and bicycle safety upgrades. We're going through the final design stage currently. And we're going to start construction this fall and all the way through 2027. We continue to have open houses and surveys being conducted. So if you want to provide your public engagement, please reach out through the county website. Highway 40, this was an area, a high crashed area with sharp curves and narrow shoulders. If you bend that way, traveling towards Bell Plain, that four mile stretch between Highway 25 and then also Highway 52, we've been improving. The bulk of that work is complete. We hope to finalize the paving this month and then get that Highway 40 open. On the back part of the handout is the Carver Link High Speed Internet Access. Three hundred and sixty plus miles of fiber have been installed. We're about ninety percent complete of the rural construction for that whole project. That's been a huge success. When I started as a commissioner five years ago, it was just surprising to me that individuals in Hancock Township and Dalgrin Township didn't have reliable internet. And so we're taking care of all that and satisfying that need. And then the next couple bullets is just some county health and well-being update about the quality of life within Carver County. Ninety-five percent of our high school students successfully graduate. And the state average is eighty-four percent. The national average is about eighty-seven percent. Sixty-nine percent of our residents drive alone to and from work. The Carver County residents have an average life expectancy of eighty-two point three years, which is higher than the state average and also higher than the national average. Twenty-five percent of the residents in Carver County are eighteen years old or younger. And that, I found that kind of interesting. And then Carver County has a homeownership rate of eighty-two percent. There's some additional library highlights, about 1.5 million checkouts of books in 2024. The libraries continue to expand, excuse me, their services, et cetera. And then on the bottom, I just gave some updates about the regional rail. How many carloads are actually going east and west or north and south in Carver County? That's all I have. If anyone has any additional questions.
Questions for Commissioner Fahy?
I just have one question about Highway 5. People still ask even though that we don't, we don't actually connect to Highway 5. But they still ask me. You know, it gets really tight in there by the arboretum with the marsh that comes up to the road. How is that going to get configured to be four lanes?
The latest video that I had seen last week is they'll build up that entire area with four lanes. And originally, they were going to put a pillar type of bridge across that whole stretch. And now it's going to be more of a causeway type of bridge. And for me, in layman's terms, it's just going to be like a big box culvert. And then they're going to use the existing roadbed and just expand it.
Okay. Will Highway 5 go into full closures then during that time?
It will.
Okay.
And then the arboretum is moving their new entrance will be at the Minnow Wash Delights.
Okay.
West of their current entrance.
Okay, thanks.
Questions on here?
I do have a question, and I want to call out to, and thanks for bringing up the Highway 5 because there are a lot of questions. It's just hard to visualize, but maybe to point people to the video. I like the idea that there was the community focus. There seems like there's a specifically arboretum area transportation plan. I'd like to know what's going to be done with County Road 10. And like, will it be similar to having a long-term plan? Will there be public engagement? It's been coming up about a new, we need more electrical capacity at Lake Town Road and County Road 10. But where do they put those power lines? What is the county or would you be able to in a future meeting, give us an update?
I would, Lori. Yep. I had seen that, I had read an email about that new line coming through Dalgrin Township and then ultimately connecting with the city of Carver. And as that expands and then as Highway 10, I haven't seen any future plans that I recall of what the expansion will be for Highway 10.
And I haven't either. It seems just very conceptual, but I would think it, we will look to the county for, to see what the, what the concept is.
Yeah, and I can come back, Lori, if you want me to. And I can maybe bring like Lyndon Robgen from Public Works who would have more knowledge. But I'll definitely look into that for you.
Thank you. The backstory on that, Commissioner, is that's caused a fair amount of heartburn, if not like flat-out anger from everybody who works or attends this, works in or attends these meetings for the most part. The Great River
Energy.
Energy, I was going to say Electric, decided to reroute. They're working through the, whatever the commission is, the, I want to say Securities Exchange Commission, that is not it. But they're kind of working their way through the process to get approval to reroute and to start a new line, which is going to be going through Dalgrin Township, which is their preferred route. They met with the city of Victoria, and this is the part that makes all of our blood boil. And in their filing said, well, it was going to cause too much of an issue for the city of Victoria because it's in their future development area. So instead, they moved it down about a half a mile into our future development area. So we didn't have a seat at the table. We weren't made aware of this until years after the planning had started. And one of the alternate routes that we favor would be something that's more along County Road 10 or where those existing power lines are, just north of County Road 10. So that's kind of the background on. That's the longer story than what you wanted.
Just a little clarification for Commissioner Fahy. So Dave Hamzy and Lyndon are aware of this. So essentially, it's just, there's not an alignment for the future County Road 10. And so until that occurs, there's really not an action item for the county. This, I think what I, we're hearing is that council is interested in seeing what that alignment is when it's ready.
Okay.
Is that fair to say?
Yes.
No questions?
Okay. You didn't have any?
I didn't have any. I must have skipped some.
Okay. Just a couple for me. Compost has been a hot button issue. We had a, I think it tells you, we had a Eastern Carver County mayor's meeting and we were talking about compost in our communities. Is there that ever something that the county would take on again?
Currently, no. The Environmental Center, we stopped taking yard waste back in 2019.
Okay.
And we just don't have the capacity at that site to take that additional waste. And now with the new Dakota Prairie site opening up, that's an opportunity for Chaska and Carver residents to go to that Dakota Prairie. I, about a month ago, went on their tour, and that is a pretty impressive facility. So if you get an opportunity
We're trying to get one.
To go check it out because that, you can bring, I pulled out their flyer, the wood waste, brush, log stump, and then yard waste.
Sounds fascinating.
And that even sod and dirt you can bring, and even food waste to that facility.
Okay.
So it gives people some options.
All right, thank you. Two more questions. So at our work session tonight, we had folks from the Metropolitan Council and the Metropolitan Transit Service, because we're talking about sunsetting some of our transit services. They started talking about SmartLink. And they talked about how Scott County supplements the budget so that there can be weekend SmartLink service in their communities. Is that something that Carver County has ever considered or would consider?
Good question, and I'm on that board. I'm the Commissioner Representative to SmartLink.
Okay.
And we have a meeting on August 4th.
Whoa!
Yay!
If you want to send me an email with those questions or concerns, Courtney, then we could talk about it then.
Okay, and I don't, if I've learned one thing in this role, is to only speak on my behalf. But I think that there's a receptive audience, so I would be very much in favor of expanding those hours. It sounds like they do it just so that they can have a weekend service, so that there's SmartLink service seven days a week. But if anyone feels differently and doesn't want to see that.
I think that's logical.
It's like we're all in favor of Carver County.
Yeah, so please send me an email and then I'll bring that forward.
Okay. Oh, look at that. Fantastic. You might have an email yet tonight.
After ice cream.
After ice cream. Let's see, and then last question, County Road 11 and Pioneer Trail, when is that roundabout opening up?
Well, the plan is to have it open by August 1st.
Okay.
But now with the additional rain that we're having, my guess is it's going to get pushed out
Okay.
a week. The concrete work was supposed to be done this week. And then the pavement, they have two lifts to put on, and they hope to have that done by next week. And then there'll be Minnesota Valley Electric, they're installing the lighting, and they're going to start working on that next week. And so as they roll into the end of July, August 1st.
It's supposed to rain all week this week.
Right, so realistically, I think it probably should be open by the fifteenth of August.
Okay.
How about, speaking of roundabouts, how about on the way to Victoria?
That's the one.
Oh, I thought you said the
No, County Road 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said 41 and
I know what you want. I know. Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you for your time. I promised you we'd get you out of here in time for you to enjoy an ice cream.
Awesome. Thank you.
Have fun. Okay, let's see here. Up next, I don't believe that we have any public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Pasco.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Perschmann. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, no business items this evening and, oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mary, council, if you agree, might be a good opportunity to just wrap up the work session items before going into closed session.
I am fine with that. So just for the tens and tens of folks who are watching at home this evening, we had a very robust agenda for our work session. And we've got a few items that we need to get over or need to complete at this point in the meeting. So we're going to kind of switch back into work session mode, which I kind of always describe as kitchen table conversations. These aren't things that we're making discussions on. These are just kind of early preliminary discussions where we kind of batter out ideas or get information. So that's what we're going to jump into. So first is, we had just gone through the draft 10-year staffing plan update. And again, if you want to see that entire presentation, you can watch tonight's work session. But I think we're at the part where we wanted to provide feedback. So with that, what have the council?
Well, I know we left the work session, you said you had a few
I do.
Things. Do you want to wait or did you want to go?
I was going to let you guys go first.
I have one more, just a comment. On this table, when the position, position, for me, it would be helpful, I would just need a reminder for like, for our public services mechanic that it's our first hire. Or then when it's the technician, the same year, it's, maybe that would be our ninth technician? That these aren't all new positions. There's sometimes just areas that we've had, need.
I'm not sure I'm following.
So like a one of one?
Yes.
Oh.
Like a building director, one of 2033 would be.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
I think you answered my question in the work session.
I'm just saying, I like this. I like the, how this has been set up. I think it's very clear. Not that the other way wasn't, but you know, always freshening things up is, is nice. So I like, you know, talking about the critical review transitions looking forward. Again, setting up a 10-year plan was, is reaching real far out there, but I like the fact that we have switched to that model. The changes that you had proposed in here, flipping down here. So where it says current plan and then plan update, I am good with all of the updates that you made to this. So I don't have any comments or changes that I'd like to see. So thank you.
Anything for me, Ken?
Yeah, I want to second Christie's comment about putting the planning cycle in there. That's very helpful. You know, there's no need to argue nitpick titles of things that are in the conceptual phase. And that's very helpful for me to see where those transitions are and where we are in that decision-making process. I think that this looks good. I'll be interested to see as we get closer to hiring the full-time fire chief, what those conversations start to look like as we flesh out that plan. Knowing that we've got, like Christie said in work session, big growth in a short period of time coming up soon after that. So, thank you.
I was just going to say, I like the format. I like the memo format, and I like the plan. I've got to admit that when I was scrolling through this over the weekend and I saw that the communicator had been pushed back to 2034 at first glance, I got a little hot. But I think you did a really good job of explaining how that function will be kind of woven into some other roles that are coming before that. And I know that I referred to use our Chief Communications Officer. I knew Brenda does a really great job. So I am fine with that at the end of the day. And realize kind of the Kless point of it's way too early to start worrying about that. Whoever is sitting in these seats at that point in 2031 can do that, or 2030, what was it, 2034? But yeah, I like it. All right, good chat. Next, the 2026 employee pay scale.
Yeah, thank you, Mary, council. So again, this is kind of a newer topic for the council. The council's always kind of annually, or always updated the employee pay scale. Although the council adopted it by, the collective bargaining agreement that we have with ASPME was limited to one variable, which was the Minneapolis Federal Reserve's Consumer Price Index Calculator. And so with the advent of the milestone program, one of the things that we negotiated was the city council's exclusive right to set what's called COLA or the Cost of Living Adjustment to that employee pay scale. And the, what's an important factor in that is if, and the council is, because the council has adjusted that pay scale on an annual basis, when we did our last employee or salary or compensation study, you might have noticed that we, we weren't far behind. Or we did have an adjustment because we had people stuck at the bottom of the scale. But from a market standpoint, we were where we needed to be. And so there, there is some, I would say, some pressure to make sure, pressure is probably an editorial comment, on making sure that that scale stays consistent so that we don't get behind. But again, that's a policy decision of the council. So some specifics here, so for employees that reached their, have reached their top pay, there's I think three or four folks, what the, the pay scale adjustment, whatever percentage you make, that'll be their max pay increase for 2026. All other employees are eligible for an additional 2.7 percent, 2.7 to 5 percent pay increase should they meet the standards that were identified in the milestone program. So that's related to years of service, training requirements, and then performance standards that are identified in the plan. Any changes that you make to this scale would be incorporated into draft versions of the 2026 budget and become effective January 1 of 2026. So because we have some different variables, we explored some different options. Again, you're able to adjust these or add different indicators. But we continued to use the Minneapolis Federal Reserve CPI. The Bureau of Labor Statistics also has an inflationary factor that's dedicated to the Minneapolis-St. Paul and Bloomington area. So that was at 2.4. We show an indicator of housing value or market value increase from the Carver County Assessor's Office. Also got information related, from Carver County, related to their anticipated COLA adjustment. And then through some sharing from our friends at the city of Chanhassen, got a whole range of, of average city employee COLA adjustments. And as you can imagine, there are still plenty of cities out there that still haven't kind of narrowed in on that as, including ourselves, as we narrowed in on that. Lynn has provided some scenarios. So based on the indicators that we used here, we rounded out an average at 3.5 percent across the, across the board. So for all funds budget impact in 2026 of 77,000, you can see a break that'd be prorated based on general fund and enterprise funds. But also did a collection of other impacts at 3.25 percent at 72,000 and 3 percent at 66,000. Mary Johnson did ask for a 4 percent look, and so I responded, or Lynn got that back to me, and then I sent that out to the council. These are our, our rounded numbers.
What, did you send that late in the day today?
Yes.
Okay, what was that?
Let me look it up here.
4:21 PM. Here, just like, can you see that?
Oh, I found it here. Okay. But I'm, where am I looking for the
4% is 85.
Eighty-five?
Correct, 85,000 at 4%. So in your packet, so you'll see the first scale is the 2025. And then the second scale, it shows a three and a half percent increase from 2025. Again, you could use any variety of percentages. So we're not looking for the council to take action on this tonight. We'd bring this to a future regular meeting for action, but we are looking for some guidance from the council on a percentage that you feel is appropriate.
I can start on this one. The reason why I asked for four is because that's what I would like to see. I think we have historically lost staff to neighboring communities that are larger and can pay more. I know that we can go toe-to-toe on culture here in the city of Carver versus any of our neighboring communities and being a really great place to work, but that can only get you so far. So I would love to see us go a 4% increase in the pay scale.
I have a question. So when I'm looking here, though, we have like the average of 3.34. And you can look at, you know, the Bureau says 2.40. Is there a reason, do we always just go on the quarter percentage for, to make it easier? Or is there a reason that we, like, if we have an average, we don't do 3.34?
This is the, this is the first time we've built a program like this.
Okay.
It was just my inclination at the time to try to keep it in simple percentages. But as a hybrid, you could say, no, let's do that average at 3.34. Because this is kind of the first time we've experimented with different inputs.
Okay.
You kind of, there isn't like a standard, I guess, at this point.
I would just say, because I don't remember us in the past doing kind of, I guess, odd numbers. It was always kind of on the quarter, so that feels more natural than
Right.
3.34.
Right.
I'm certainly happy with the 3.5. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm on the board yet with the four. I think I need to hear a little more from anyone else.
Let's hope I next.
That'll be me. So I would also support 4%. I think perception of our personnel is, we need to project that we, that we do care, that we do invest, and that we're a little above average, including in pay. I think losing one person, because there's a sentiment that, well, gosh, those guys just gave us what they could versus that little pushover resonates. And the cost of losing one person, I think, is far in excess of the difference of the few thousand dollars between average, a little, and above average. And just pushing that, Carver's a great place to be, and we show that in what we pay you. So I would support 4%.
I still need some time to think about it because I'm appreciating Mr. Perschmann's perspective. But I'm, I'm really just thinking how I'm going to respond when somebody says, you know, they didn't get a raise at their job, and they're getting, you know, so many
Do you want help with that?
Yes.
The answer is, well, you should work for the city of Carver.
Work for the city of Carver, yeah. Just knowing that that increase gets, that money comes from the residents. So I have to, and it helps now seeing some of these numbers and as we get more into the budget process.
Okay, but the ask tonight is for us to kind of come up with a number.
Two and a half to 3%. Two and a half to 3%.
Thank you.
I am deeply uncomfortable with 4% for many of the reasons that Councilmember Sayer just said. We're looking at, yes, a 3%, 3.5%, 4% increase for our top earners, but you have to include the increases for milestones. We're looking at closer to 7% for most of our employees. While we do need to remain competitive, we also have big expenditures coming. And every dollar that we can save here or there helps our residents overall. And the number I'm, I'm looking at, I'm along the lines of Councilmember Sayer, 2.5, 3% is what I'm looking at.
So, I, Kayla, I, I agree with some of that when we have talking, we're talking milestones and and the dollar amounts and the money, because I, I, yes, agree in being as responsible as we can. I, when I look at the numbers that have been put up here, I don't see, well, we have the bureau one that's at 2.4, but the rest are hovering in that 3 to 4 range. So for me, below, below 3 doesn't feel good enough. 4%. The 4 feels, it's pushing a little bit for me, especially when we look at some of the other things that factor in the end of this. 3.5, I'm fully on board with. Anything below 3, I, I'm not. I think that's too low. Or might be a little bit too high.
In the spirit of negotiation, would you go 3.75? I'm not really.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Just one point of clarification. So, we wouldn't take this to council to be adopted until like your last meeting. So we would use this figure to inform the budget documents. So, if you, whatever number you chose, whether it's 2.5 or 3, or 3.5, or whatever that number is, that's the number that Lynn would use to compile that. If for whatever reason you wanted to go lower or higher through the context of the entire budget, because we don't want to put you in the position of like picking this one thing and then locking you in. Or you, so you're traditionally, because we only had one input, and because we were contractually obligated, we did it at the next meeting. Because we have the flexibility, we're gonna take this information and inform the budget. But you're not gonna adopt it until the budget's adopted, and then following that, then you'd adopt the employee pay scale. So, if that provides any sense of relief that you're not locking yourself in today when you haven't seen even the first draft of the budget, maybe that's helpful to you in the conversation.
Yeah, that is helpful, and that makes me want to push harder for 4, realizing that we can dial it back at a later point. Kayla, I think you're familiar with our annual process. We set our preliminary levy in September, and that is the not to exceed. And we always kind of talk about it as like, are we comfortable with it? No, not quite yet. But we can still do some horse trading and figure it out. That's how the lens that I'm looking at this through, is if we put it at 4% now, can we dial it back at a later date? Yep, absolutely. But I would like to have that number in the preliminary budget that we see.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna counter that. I think that I don't, right, okay, make sure I heard you correctly. So, I mean, we're gonna work through this many times, seeing what these numbers come out as before we hit the preliminary levy, preliminary levy setting time, right?
So, correct. I mean, it'll be up to you on how like deep of a dive you'll do on like this specific. But when you see that first budget, we'll say the employee salaries are based on these indicators. So my, you know, employees eligible for milestone and adjustment, whatever that percentage is. And then based on the context of the entire budget, let's say you're looking to decrease the levy by another $10,000. If it's at 1% of you might say, well, I know we have this at X% but I want another $10,000 shaved off the levy. So, I think we need to go from 4 to 3, or 3 to 2, or whatever that is. You'll have the freedom to do that. We're just, because there are some variables in the numbers, we're looking to kind of get a an ankle on where you want to see that so that we can give you a better draft budget.
And for me, once you put 4 in there, I just, I, I think all of a sudden it just becomes 4, right? Rather, because we're gonna be looking at other things. And I would prefer to see 3.5 in there. And as we work through it, if we feel like the budget's coming in great, and we've got a little bit, you know, that we're comfortable doing a little bit extra. I just, I think once that 4 gets in there as printed, I think it's not coming out. And I don't, it makes me kind of uncomfortable that's how it's getting put into the budget cycle. Because I think on the flip side, coming back and being like, nope, we're taking that out, I think that's worse than adding it. I just think the optics of that are, oh, we've got it in there. Anybody who reads it now, we've decided to bring it back down to whatever the number might be. It looks like now we're slashing stuff. So, I think there are some optics that we have to think about if we put 4% in here and then change it and bring it back down.
It become, once it becomes printed, it becomes an expectation rather than a conversation.
And that doesn't mean it couldn't, like I said, if our budget's coming in well, that we couldn't put it up before we certify the preliminary levy. But I think it becomes the written word and the written, I don't want to say law, it becomes the written expectation once 4 goes in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna push back on that, though, because I you've been through as many budget cycles as I have been, and you know the horse trading and the slashing and the pencil sharpening and whatever your favorite phrase is for that, that happens when we kind of take a look at things. So, never have I ever had a say. We should give the employees a little bit more after the budget comes in for the first draft. Like that, that's not realistic. That won't happen.
I'm gonna add another comment, really the same as what I said before. I think the most expensive mistake we can make as a city is to lose people to a neighboring community because they feel like the city isn't paying them their worth. We're talking about an $8,000 difference between 3.5 and 4%. I want to send a message that the city values those people staying with the city. All we have to lose is one person, and the cost of acquiring and training and having somebody get up to speed is gonna far exceed $8,000 that we might spend to show that we're paying above our, a little bit above what the cost of living increase will be. We all look at that. We all look at what our companies give us, our employers give us. Are they giving us enough to even make up the difference? Or a little less or a little more. Boy, when we get a little more in our, in our jobs in the commercial workplace, we recognize that. I really think we need to consider that for our employees. And again, it's an $8,000 difference. It may end up being less than that. We may go back and forth or have another need that takes it down. But I think we need to start at that number.
Do we have an idea of, because in, in the writing here, we're talking about if you want to go to the overview part, Brent, so everyone just see what I'm talking about. So we're looking at this, all other employees are eligible for an additional 2.75%. I mean, so technically, some employees could be getting 6.75%, but we did that as a milestone. We did that as an incentive. That's fine. That's a big number, but how many people do we think are hitting that this year? Are there any that are going to be getting that milestone?
The button. So, the budget will, will plan the most expensive scenario that all employees hit their milestone. So, I, I don't want to speculate on because it's a, ends up being kind of a personnel issue related to whether or not their people are gonna hit it. I would say from like a number-wise, like we have, we have four out of our, I just had the number up. We have four members of the team that are at top pay for their pay grade. So, four out of, what are we at, 19 or 20? So, 16 of our full-time folks would be eligible for the 2.75 in addition to whatever the scale adjustment would be. Does that answer your question?
Could we, when will we see a number of what that would look like? Let's say that all of them, all of the staff had the 2.75.
That, that's the number in the, oh, like the overall?
Yeah.
That'll be in the, your budget presentation materials in second meeting in August. That's the 18th, I believe, of August.
Do I hear 3.75 for planning purposes to put in the draft budget?
I will do 3.75 for planning purposes in the budget.
Thank you. I appreciate you willing to negotiate. Can you go 3.75?
Yes, I can.
Anybody else want to jump on the 3.75 bandwagon?
No, thank you. No, thanks, but I respect that the majority is for it.
Thank you. Alright. Do you have the traction you need? Alright, up next, city manager report. Again, just a reminder, we're still going over some items from our work session.
Thank you, Mary Council. So, the county shared out some information on social media related to the Steel Club project on Saturday. So I just wanted to to highlight their posting and make sure expectations were clear, or if there's any special requests that the council had related to the project.
I literally, so I always kind of make a list for Brent. We connect on Mondays when there's a council. And I had on my list last night signs for Long John and Carver Parkway, and then we were on a bike ride last night, and there they are. And they appeared over the weekend. So, well done for anticipating and making that happen.
It's like I had nothing to do with this. What are you talking about?
No, there are the flashing signs that say the road can be closed. Any other comments?
No other comments.
And then private well ordinance, something I wanted to kind of get, the city has current language that restricts residents from constructing their own private wells. And I'm gonna kind of throw it over to Andrew to, to kind of get into the detail. But there is a, there is quite a bit of adverse impact to the city's overall water system. And we want to take an opportunity to clean up some of that language, so there's no ambiguity in it. But I'm gonna throw it over to, or ask Andrew to come up and kind of talk about the need.
So I believe right now, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, that there, there's language, current language in the ordinance that states that if you're outside of the DWISMA, which is the Drinking Water Protection Source Area, you are allowed to drill a well for irrigation purposes, not for consumption, but just irrigation. So that kind of leads us to the point of there could be 2,500 private wells around town, which it would probably be a negative impact to the aquifer that we all drink out of. So, city has a well-add protection plan, and that's kind of stating we're trying to protect our groundwater, because that's the only water we have available to us. So if that got polluted, we would be in dire straits, because we can't take from the river. So, cleaning up this ordinance would be, if you are in town with water and sewer available, you cannot drill a well for any purposes.
I have a couple of questions. Someone who has a well in my yard.
Yep.
So, the city drills its own wells, though, for our parks, right? We're still doing that for our irrigation. So we, we'll allow ourselves to.
Yep.
Okay. So likely, I'm wondering if, I understand wanting to protect, you know, the aquifers that, you know, people are tapping into and how things are going. The likelihood of someone drilling their own home well at this point, I mean, the cost of that is large. Very large. So I don't know that the ROI for most homeowners is going to matter that much. I don't think we're going to have 25 homes that are suddenly gonna go dig a well in their, or have a well installed in their yard. You're asking to regulate something that isn't really a big enough deal to regulate. I mean, if our well went out and we had to like dig a new well, we are not going to do it, right? Like, we are not gonna put in a $3,000 or $40,000 well. And I may be a little off in prices. Someone can go ahead and tell me if I'm wrong on that, but I know it's not free, right? Do you know how much it costs to dig a well?
I don't. It's not cheap, but.
I worry that if we don't put this in place, it just takes one person. And one bad actor, one accident, you name it. To lose our groundwater source. And there are communities throughout the Twin Cities that are dealing with the PFAS, and what a disaster that is. This is not an apples-to-apples comparison, but I just, I don't think that that would be the case. And we have had a history of coming up with ordinances and regulations for something that hasn't been a realistic scenario in the past.
Well, what's the permitting process for a private well?
So, we don't permit wells that DNR does. So when the city of Carver digs a new well for either irrigation purposes or for municipal drinking water, there's a lengthy process of DNR making sure that that well is not gonna interfere with other people's wells. So, in the case of well six, which we just got permitted this year, and it was drilled, I think, over a year ago, there was several indicators that it had a possibility to interfere with private wells. A few in Chaska, the township. So we had to have agreements with those landowners that say, if our well makes your well go dry, we would fix it for you. Or we would hook you up to city utilities.
Actually, worse than that, it says, if your has any problems, city, you have to pay to get it inspected. We have to send an inspector out there within 24 hours. And it almost defaults that it's the city's wells fault, that their private domestic wells are being interfered with and running into issues. Now, if they inspected and it turns out that it's, you know, malfunctioning for some reason, technical reason, that's different. But if they're just having water issues and water supply issues with their domestic well, it's gonna be the city's responsibility not only to inspect it, but also to pay for either digging their well deeper, or hooking them up to municipal water, or doing something that gives them a reliable water source. So it's, it's kind of a your groundwater permit, city, and you want to turn on your new wells, you have to play by our rules. So.
But the interest doesn't happen for a private well?
No, not typically. I mean, this was mainly because of just the proximity of these wells to where our well was. But the concern.
For the water tower. The well is for the water.
True.
Right, this is not for sprinkling in my yard.
No, that's true. And, and this didn't just like, this was the ordinance itself wasn't just, we, nobody looked at our ordinance and said, oh, we should change this. Someone came in and said, I want to put an irrigation well in my in my yard. And that's what caused Andrew, I think, and his team to look at the, the ordinance, and that's what caused us. I mean, people are interested, maybe not a lot of people, to your point, Councilmember Mac, but, I mean, this individual asked if she could drill a private well, and to the staff's point, I mean, I think there's a policy rationale for not allowing them. If you're in the city's municipal water service area and you want water, we'd prefer that you use that water to irrigate and not drill new wells. Now, there are existing wells, and we're not gonna, there's no reason to disrupt the ability for people to use those. But that's, that's the policy rationale.
I think for me, one, one person applying out of all of this or questioning it is it's like a very small percentage, right, of, of people in town who would be looking to put a well in. And I'm sure that the well drillers have to be certified some way. Again, they have to be permitted with the DNR to get it in. The likelihood of more than a handful of people, I think, is unlikely. And then when we had the streets redone up on midtown, most of the people there who were on the well system still did not even keep it for their watering. Most of them had a want to look at it. City water is treated water, right? So certainly there's a point that, of course, the city says, well, we're gonna make some money off this, get to irrigating, but also for the health of, of the environment, untreated water is actually better for plants and flora and fauna in the environment. So.
So I agree that, you know, the cost of putting in a well is cost prohibitive to water your lawn. No one would do that. But I'm actually surprised that we wouldn't know if somebody were to put in a well. But I'm actually surprised that we wouldn't know if somebody were to put in a well in their backyard. I don't think it's gonna happen that often. But does not a permit, I mean, I don't think it has to be even cost prohibitive. It just gives us a mechanism to know that it's happening and have some, some assurance that it wouldn't damage the aquifer. Does it make sense to at least?
I think a permit sounds just fine if the city knows what's happening and if they get the reports back. You know, they have to supply whatever report has to come from DNR or whatever governing body at the time.
Would this ordinance apply to commercial as well as residential properties? The, the type of ordinance that we're proposing?
Yeah. It's my opinion, I made the call on the initial request, that our current ordinance prohibits it residential and commercial. The intent here is that I believe there is some ambiguity where if someone wanted to be a contrary and they could argue against it. And so it was my position that I asked Andrew and Da- and Dave to clean it up. But if the council wanted to allow it, it'd be my opinion that you'd have to change the ordinance. But my interpretation of the language today is that it's prohibited unless it's in a. Ultimately, based on my review of the ordinance, it was my opinion that the current language prohibits digging of new wells. Now, if the council wants to change it or disagrees, there's an opportunity to do that. But if someone comes in tomorrow and asks to dig a well and, you know, ultimately it's the city manager's call to, to interpret the ordinance, it's my interpretation that it's prohibited. If the council wants to change it, you're, you're the policymakers of the community, so you can do that. But as it stands now, they can't until the council directs otherwise through the ordinance.
Or they'd have to petition council, they'd have to come before council.
They'd have to have the ordinance changed.
No.
I've seen a few.
That's not, no.
Oh.
I think we had a lot of back and forth.
Okay.
Brent, so you're probably mixing up some discussion. But, um, the ordinance today says irrigation wells may be drilled after securing a permit from the city. And the only place they can't be drilled is if it's in that, that water supply area, the protected water supply area. So as, so this came up and someone said, hey, can I drill an irrigation well on my property? What's the process for getting this permit? Because there's a provision of code that says. And then staff said, well, we didn't really realize people could do that. That doesn't seem like a great idea for the reasons that your public works team, um, have outlined tonight. And so the ask was, well, can we clean this language up so that, that we can't do this? And, and we'll bring it to the council for discussion. And if they want to adopt it, great. If you want to leave your language as is, that's fine too. It's, it really is a policy call. But the, the code language today does allow for it if they get a city permit. I don't think there's a, a process necessarily or a, a playbook that staff has for this permitting process. But I could be wrong about that, maybe there's some history of this being done at some point.
Thanks for clearing that up, Dave.
Yeah, that's what it says.
So the reason why I ask about residential versus commercial is one of the problems we're dealing with in the county right now when it comes to groundwater, um, is that there are many cities in the area that restrict wells for residential, but don't restrict them for commercial. And data centers are coming in and they are bypassing the city and getting well permits from the DNR. And, um, that's causing some friction between cities and data centers that are coming into some of these communities. Um, and there is some, obviously the DNR monitors aquifers, groundwater, all of that sort of stuff. And so the idea is that the data centers will not be able to pull so much water that it causes drinking water problems in the cities. But there is deep resident concern about that in these communities that are having these data centers come in. And I'm thinking about, not right now, but Great River Energy, one of their big top, because they love being next to these high energy lines. So if we have it, if we don't have it written in such a way that we prohibit that within our city boundaries, Great River Energy does what they want to do, we have a data center that wants to come in, they want to drill their own well, suddenly we're in a really tough spot. So, and I know, again, going back to Great River Energy, if you ask them, they will tell you that there's alternate cooling technologies and blah, 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 blah. My research into this, because as part of Water Management Organization for the County, we talk about this a lot, the research is that, yes, there's new cooling technologies out there, but they are not economically viable and won't be for at least a decade. So, um, we're still looking at well water as the primary source of cooling for these, these data centers. So that's just my concern about residential versus commercial and well permitting with that information in mind. So just keep that in mind as we talk about this.
And to be clear on that, um, if you're in, if your property is located somewhere that has access to municipal water, you won't get a building permit unless, it's conditioned on you connecting your, your facility to, um, to city water. So, I mean, that's common in urban cities that have, um, you know, access to treated water and sewer. But that, our code says that too, just for what it's worth.
Is that, if, if we were to have a data center come in, if they hooked up their offices to municipal water, would that get them through? You don't think so? Because that's what they're, that's.
This is an issue that I'd have to look at, but I mean.
That's what's happening in these other communities is they're hooking up to municipal water for offices, bathrooms, potable water, and then drilling their own wells specifically for the cooling operations.
Could be. And I don't know the answer to that question, although I do know that the limited well ability in Carver, I think, is irrigation wells. And that's not an irrigation well, what you're talking about is a substantial.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
I think what we could do is kind of pivot. And before we bring you a graph, we could just bring you what we have. And it sounds like there's some interest in the topic. Uh, I was just giving you a, a heads up. Plenty of content here, so let's.
Got all kinds of passion.
Let's, before we get to like the fix, let's get to what's there and have the council weigh in and provide us with some direction. And I don't want to spend ti- Andrew and Dave's time putting something together, but maybe it's not consistent with where you want the community to be on this topic. Is that fair?
I'm just, so I was, I'm wondering if there is another community that has a permitting process for that? Because it says right now, I mean, probably back in the day, there was a permit that has been thirty years in some drawer. But, um, can we see if there's other, another community that has a, like, what their permit might look, look like if they have it?
Yeah, I think.
In our case, it would be simply paperwork with staff to confirm that they're not in the water supply, has to abide by DNR requirements and they have to get a permit through the state. I mean, the heavy lift is through the state. I think, I think our permit is a, a check for us to be able to say, oh, you're putting it in a location that isn't a problem from our groundwater management standpoint. So that if somebody puts something in and we don't find out about it, we later say, well, you were supposed to come get a permit. You get permission from us, I mean. And you didn't do that, so you have to fix that at this point. So my guess is, I don't think there's any real magic or special process that needs to happen with that other than staff needs to look at their parcel and make sure that they're in not a protected area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that totally makes sense, okay.
So.
Would we be able to write an agreement, like what we had to write with the DNR with our well number six? As far as you dig a well, if something happens to our aquifer, which is not our aquifer, the aquifer that we use, then you owe us whatever it takes to fix the problem?
I don't, I don't know if that's practical. I mean, I think Andrew can probably speak to it more and maybe it's a conversation for another, another meeting. But, um, it, it, what it sounds like is the council's curious about what, what's the risk here if we allow this? Because we currently do allow it, you have to get a permit. What's the concern from staff's perspective about this? And if one person did it or if a hundred people did it, is the concern different? Again, I don't know how long we've had since someone came in and asked for an irrigation well, but.
Yeah, can I, like, this is the, maybe the second time in fifteen years that I'm aware of. I would say, um, we can kind of go through that. I would say like, you know, the last time I, I had heard about like a irrig, like a well digging price, it was in that fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range where the city's wells are like in the million to million and a half range. So there's probably not a way for a private resident to like take on costs if they inadvertently connect it. I also think there, and we can kind of flush this out, no pun intended. I really didn't intend that, but it came together nicely. But, um, although we don't want, uh, like if we're putting treated water on lawns, there is an element frankly, within like the cost structure of your rate system where if people can financially like, uh, make it work to dig a private well because they're a big irrigator, you're gonna, we're gonna be in a position where we inadvertently might have to change our rates to make the lower tiers higher because we're missing out on those big rate payers, someone who might be paying, you know, six, seven hundred bucks a month because they really water their lawn, uh, whether it's residential, commercial ball, we still need X amount to fund the system, so then the rates.
I'm so not worried about that. The number of people who would actually do this, I think, would be so.
Yeah, I'm just.
And I under, and I know.
I'm just pointing it out.
It, it factors into that, but then to say, well, you need to support our, our system by irrigating, make sure you irrigate up to seven hundred dollars, isn't, you know what I mean, that's.
That wasn't my intention, but I understand your point.
Yeah, I just, I think.
When it says, it's not, I think there's more than just the physical, the physicalness of digging the well. That, uh, if it becomes a trend, and I'm not, you forget about that, that example of just that one person, but if it becomes a trend, there's probably a whole kind of basket full of unintended consequences related to, uh, the impact of our wells, the financial structure, um, so on and so forth. So we can like bet that all out and the council can determine whether or not those are concerns for you. My point is it's, it's more than just the digging of the actual well, that there are probably some things that I'm not thinking about, that we're collectively not thinking about, that I'd want to make sure that we have a, a clear view. Because it, it'd be my, um, thought that if it's permitted and it becomes kind of a thing, it could replicate or duplicate. And kind of once the toothpaste is out of the tube, it might be hard to say, okay, this isn't for us, we gotta stop it. So I just want to make sure that you have a clear view. I'm not trying to get you to one position or the other. I just want to make sure that we take some time now to like digest these comments and then think about, you know, talk to our entire team about, you know, what could happen as a result. And hopefully that answer becomes self-evident to you and you can make a decision based on that feedback.
I'm just kind of where my head is at. I think, um, you know, as we're pushing these developers to come in and to build more larger executive lots, I think we're gonna see folks who have deeper pocketbooks and this might become more of a reality with those kinds of homes and the expectations that come along with those. I also think back, it wasn't, it wasn't two years ago yet where we had some discoloration issues with our water system that concerned a number of people. And that was probably two, three dozen members of our community that I think we all, maybe with the exception of you, Caleb, but probably tangentially, um, we all heard about it.
I heard about it from my neighbors and I wasn't in the council.
So, so where I'm going with is that was two to three dozen residents. Imagine if something happens to our water system and it is seven thousand residents like that. This scares the hell out of me, thinking about the potential for it to go south. Will it happen with one well? Maybe not, but I'm not a gambler. I think I've said that before in front of this group, I'm not gonna shake the dice on that.
Yeah, for the, someone who has a well, but I don't, you know, the, the small number, and I, I get where you're saying some of these bigger lots might be coming in and they can, maybe with deeper pockets can afford. Again, that's a handful, that's a handful. The water is coming out of the ground either way, right? It's coming out of the ground. A, a home well, I, I will, I will bet my house on it. It's not going to screw up the entire water system in the city of Carver and the brown water that we had.
But your house wouldn't pay for those repairs, like you're gonna bet your house.
It's not going to, so there's not gonna pay for it.
I know, but like that.
Screw that system.
If it goes south, if, when it goes south and our one source of water.
It won't.
Net worth in that home will not pay for what it's gonna cost.
Because, but there won't be a reason to, because it will never get to that. There's no home well that is going to literally shut down the entire city of Carver system. It's not gonna happen. But from, and if it, it does come that people have, you know, maybe have, again, a little bit deeper pockets, that's gonna be a handful. Most people are not gonna make a twenty to thirty thousand dollar investment to dig a well in their yard. I think it's so far and few between. I think we're regulating something that isn't even a thing, right? I mean, we, we allow wells now. So now we're gonna regulate and say, well, they can have it, but you can't have them. But again, if we didn't have one now, I'm just, this is my personal, I'm not gonna throw in a thirty thousand dollar well if it didn't come with the property that I bought. I just, I think if it's permitted heavily through the DNR, there are water waste management, there are water management people. The city can have a permit and people who ever wants to take on something that grand in their yard and pay that kind of money for it, to use it four months out of, three months out of the year, have at it. I, I just, I think it's overregulating for something that's not a problem.
Anybody else want to opine? What you need from us, because I know you don't.
No, we do. Okay, this is like, we talked about before, like this has, this is what, this is part of.
Yeah, we're in.
This is good government, like, uh, this helps us rather than like, if we wouldn't have gotten this feedback, we would have taken you like a pretty basic, uh, code update. And then this would have happened maybe later. So like, this is working how it should. We give you a preview during this part of the work session. You give us some feedback and now we can pair, prepare a better product for you. So we can look at, you know, what other cities do. We can kind of maybe do a, a deeper dive into, uh, the pros and cons, uh, if any, of like private wells on a municipal system. Uh, we can look at cost structure. You know, those are the major themes that I'm picking up on, um, and provide you with a more, and a overview of our ordinance existing and provide you with a more comprehensive, um, analysis. And then, uh, we'll take direction from there. So, um, we landed where we should have, so.
All right. You got one, a couple more things?
Yeah, um, so if you remember, we were initially talking about, uh, actually at this meeting doing a review of twenty year, or not twenty years, excuse me, design build out years and review of architectural services. Well, maybe fortuitously the, uh, ORTEL wasn't, uh, ready to prepare or get us a proposal, uh, in time to get it on the agenda. We actually ended up getting it this morning. But in talking to Andrew and Lynn, uh, we, we think that there is possibly a better way to kind of take this project and kind of build or chunk it into different steps. And so, uh, as you know, tonight, uh, we're reviewing potential site locations, uh, for our future facility, kind of with the understanding that we really can't really do a deep dive into facility planning if we don't know the location. And then there's some market pressure for land and rising land costs. So if we're able to, uh, if the council is able and willing, uh, we'd like to be in a position to consider entering into a purchase agreement. But again, this is based on a number of factors, primarily, uh, if you want to make that investment and do you feel like there's a, a land that's appropriate. But also, uh, August fourth, uh, providing that direction to staff on planned build out year. And so, within the context of the plan, the space study, you saw twenty, thirty and fifty year, but we also wanted to create a space, um, if there was something in between, whether that's twenty-five years or thirty-five or fifteen or ten, that, uh, even though they have those specific sizes, you know, we've talked about as a staff and I think as council that there is a opportunity to take that feedback that you got from the community, what you got from staff and your own personal observations and view of the city. And maybe there's a kind of a different thing that you want to plan for. And so, uh, we don't want to be so cavalier to think that those are the only three options that you have to choose from. So I just wanted to highlight that. But the reason that we think that is important, uh, and why we, we're gonna separate that from architectural services is based on the size that you choose, uh, there's gonna be a direct cost impact. There's a difference in architectural services and construction management services between a twenty-year and fifty-year build out, right? between a twenty-year and fifty-year build out, right? The building's bigger, there's more site disturbances, et cetera. So we feel like we could get you a better proposal on architectural services if we can narrow in on that scope. And you don't have to look very far to see like, like the need for architectural services and developing plans is is a really a critical step, not only in kind of the internal plan development, but as far as a community engagement tool. You know, you can do a Google search about finding how many cities or state or counties are in a position where they planned a budget number and then it came back and it's like, oh, it's twenty thousand over budget. We may have to cut this, that or the other thing. And frankly, we were in that position with City Hall where, you know, we, you know, didn't have a great set of numbers. And so I would, like, one of the things like, well, how can we learn from, you know, other people's pain, including our own is, you know, I think I would advocate. Again, this is an editorial, so, you know, this is the council's kinda collective decision. But the more work that we can do on the head end to understand what the project is and what it would cost, the better off that we're gonna be as far as like maintaining a trusting um and reliable relationship with residents and what is being proposed at the end of the day. And so there, there's, that's gonna come at a cost. And so Lynn and I, along with Andrew, are working on uh a strategy, 'cause what we'd like to be able to do is uh pay for those costs in cash as much as possible so that you're not uh linked to borrowing for some of those planning fees, 'cause that then kinda, in my opinion, puts on some pressure like, well, we have, you know, one million dollars worth of design fees. We better do that project 'cause we have to pay that back and do a bond. Well, if you pay for those fees upfront, I think it gives you some flexibility and freedom to make some choices. And so, um, all that said, we want, once we have that number, we'd like to give you kind of a, a better line of sight to what architectural services are and introduce the concept of construction management services. So that's kind of a building owner's representative, um, which, uh, they assist in the process of plan development. And at the end of the day, that position should really pay for itself. So instead of uh bidding the project as one under a general contractor, a project is split up into scopes of work. So there's a plumbing scope, there's an electrical scope, concrete, uh, blacktop, et cetera, name it all, you know, uh, millwork, uh, et cetera. And rather than paying that general contractor's markup, uh, you'll be paying kinda that kinda direct buyer, direct consumer price. So at the end of the day, that construction management service as well as providing uh insight into the building and maybe um more efficient or affordable ways to construct the building rather than uh solely relying on the architect's vision. So we wanna kinda provide that whole story and narrative uh to you uh at a September work session. And then at the following meeting, have you consider approval of those services in whatever form you feel comfortable. And if that needs to extend or whatever, but we, I wanted to kinda get this in front of you and get some reaction if, if you feel comfortable with this, as if this is too fast or too slow. Um, but just in our experience in kinda building facilities of this size, like these are, I would argue, the most critical steps. These are like the building blocks to the information that's gonna be shared. And so, like, I wanna be kinda tedious and meticulous in the conversation and the planning. Um, so that you're getting what you need on, I would offer a generational public investment in facilities. So I'm gonna pause there and look for feedback or just general discussion from the council.
I can go first. Um, I'm okay with this timeline. I feel like we have the listening session at our June meeting. For me, that like every other week's cycle is like, let's, let's go, let's start making some decisions on this, so I'm okay with this.
I think it looks fine.
Same.
That was easy.
Is there?
Don't ask me a question, you got an easy one, Brent.
Not to belabor this, but like, is there, and is there anything like, in like, as we prepare for that August fourth meeting, we talk about like building scopes. Um, is there anything that you think that you might need other than just like the basics on like where we've been and how we got here?
See, look what you started. So the fifty-year one, is that when we're looking at just the, is that square footage right there? So that's just the building or that's the entire like property area we're looking at?
That's, it's the building, so it'd be storage and.
But the plan is to that we want to overbuy on land so that we can add on if we want to. So do we need to, I mean, do we need to go the fifty-year route? I think that's shooting pretty far into the stars.
Well, that's like, that's the conversation that the council will have on the fourth. I'm just asking, do you need information that would support whatever position you want to take?
Do we even need to come back with the fifty-year one? I mean, do we want that information? That's so far out and that's.
So what we're doing on the fourth is we're picking A, B, C, D.
Right. But if we think C is so high in the sky right now, that is even worth bothering with?
I think, just thinking out loud, I think we owe it to residents to keep it on there because we've always said twenty, thirty and fifty years. Everything that we put in the, in the newsletters, everything that we communicated online has laid out those three options. I think if it went missing, it would be a little bit like, where'd that go? So it might not be on your realm of possibilities, but maybe it is on somebody else's. Um, and I just, I don't want it to like fall off in a work session that was tucked into a.
Into the council, yes. Yeah, I mean, fair enough. Yeah, we're in a work session right now. No, that's fine. I just, again, you, my writing there is on the wall, the fifty-year seems a little too far, but again, if we have. But we have, we have put out, you're correct, we have put out in all of our correspondence and all of our things, the twenty, thirty, fifty. So if we wanna keep it in there as comparison, that's fine.
The one thing, and I know this might be awkward, but I think it's an important point, is how much, like, I've connected with Andrew on this earlier today, but, you know, I think there is a space that if you wanted Andrew's perspective from public services, like what he sees, like, you know, we have this space study information in one bucket. But then there's kind of like a, a practical, like boots on the ground. Can you wanna keep this isolated to what's in the space study? The space study is, you know, built on, you know, that data, what they saw. You're gonna get editorial and he, it hasn't been developed, we just had the conversation. I also don't wanna inadvertently put Andrew in a position where he might be in conflict with like the council, but I don't know if that's a value add for you or not, so.
I, I don't wanna see you in the hot seat, but I would love your perspective. What we're looking at right now is a space study that was done by folks who have a really good reputation or really know what they're talking about. But you may not have ever worked in public services a day in their life, so it would be insightful for me to hear from you. I don't know.
I think anything that helps us make a better decision, why would we not wanna hear that?
I agree.
Yeah, I'm fine with whatever.
Better choose the right one.
Christie one.
He's gonna have a well, but. That's too soon. But the, I mean, that's the part that we were talking, not the well part, but the is like creating a context for Andrew to like explain that, like, you can share what you see, but then like what goes into that. So it's helpful to know that that's of interest and this is one more piece that you can consider. It doesn't mean uh you'd be going against staff's recommendation or anything. It's just one more piece of information you can consider in doing that.
Well, and even like we were talking about the mechanic position earlier, I think Andrew, it was you who kinda told us, like opened my eyes to when you have one mechanic, you don't necessarily just need one bay. Sometimes something will be all torn apart and you'll need a part. And so you might need three bays for one mechanic so that you can keep working on stuff in different phases. So like that kind of color commentary will be helpful.
Okay, that's what I got. Oh, sorry, one more thing. Um, I made a note. Uh, so the city sends out those easement letters that we had talked about from the um certified levy project. Uh, little bit of a mishap, but we've corrected it. They, so that was noted. Uh, new letters were sent out this afternoon, so if you get any feedback from folks that just got the letter, but they're like, well, where's the easement? We're aware of it. It's been corrected. Um, unfortunate, but uh we've got it corrected.
Did we catch that or did a resident?
Uh, I know I got feedback from a resident. I connected with Todd Hubmer. I don't know, it's probably a combination of probably both, but I don't know exactly uh how that occurred.
Yeah, that's a little unfortunate, so. And so when will they receive the, the actual information or have they received it in the mail yet?
They received the first letter, I think probably over the weekend sometime. The second letter went out today, so they probably get it by tomorrow. Um, that has the same letter, but it has the, the follow-up figure drawing, so. It happens, so.
All right. Um, okay, up next, um, we are going to morph back into our regular meeting agenda. We are on item number nine, the closed session. Um, so I need a motion.
I can do that.
Great.
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D zero five subdivision three C to discuss, develop and consider potential offers to purchase various land connected with the future public services facility over portions of Carver County. PIDs zero four, zero two, six, zero, three, zero, zero and zero four, zero one, two, zero, nine, zero, zero.
Got a motion by council member Sarah.
I'll take an easy second on that.
Second by council member Mike. Any further discussion? All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Oh. Again, knock on wood.
When is that done?
We're good. Okay.
By Eden Prairie, do we know?
What are they even doing?
Okay, we are back. Um, let's see, so we're back. There's nothing that I have to say now that we're back.
No. I'll, I'll make a motion to go back to the open session.
No, no, we're back. We're back.
Oh, we're already back.
Okay, so we're up to communicating, we're up to communicating. We're up to communications and we are slap happy because it is, it is nine twenty-two. All right, uh, we heard from Brent already. Eric?
I have nothing.
Lori?
No, just that I'm back.
Uh, I'll do that one, Christie.
Nothing.
Kayla?
I, uh, so this past weekend had a really great opportunity to meet with my local, local, local constituents. Um, we had our annual block party and had some really great conversations with our neighbors about what's, everything that's going on in the city. And some of that came up in work session, but it was just a really good opportunity to talk to people and see what they're actually thinking about. And I'd like to point out to the communications team that every single person I talked to mentioned reading the newsletter and the water bill. So it is, the utility bill newsletter is definitely being read, so.
All right, um, a few updates for me. On July eighth, they did project lifecycle at the farmer's market, which is you can take your bike in and they will give it a tune-up and fix some minor repairs. Um, it was really busy and it was cool to see them so busy. They also were selling some bikes too, so some folks were, especially kids and adults, were walking away really, really excited. There was some brand new bikes. July ninth, we had a mayor's of Eastern Carver County meeting, um, that I alluded to a little bit. Um, it was interesting. So it was Carver, Chaska, Victoria and Chanhassen for the Fourth of July. And kinda one of the takeaways that both maybe a little bit more for a disaster response plan, but people, um, were like, yeah, when are you gonna come and take away our trees? And it was a really tough conversation of like, that's private property. The city doesn't go into private property. In one community, the neighbors got together and rented a wood chipper. And they're like, we've got forty feet of wood chips in the street. When are you guys gonna come and pick them up? And so, um, just, I don't know how we communicate that proactively with folks other than being like, if it was a tree, we're not gonna come and get it for you, but just to kind of a heads up, and I thought that that was kind of insightful. Um, and then that was kinda the precipitous for the conversation that I had or the question that I asked the commissioner about compost. The communities that do have compost in their communities, um, are really struggling with it because they are getting contractors who are coming in. They are getting people coming in after hours. There's Mayor Victoria says, you always see like on the Chaska community pages on Facebook, like, oh, I've got a tree I wanna take in. I'll take it to Victoria. Anybody can go there. So, um, it has been a struggle for them, so. Um, let's see, uh, July fourteenth was the regional council of mayors meeting. Um, it's their annual meeting with superintendents. So, uh, Mayor Hubbard from Chaska and I brought Dr. Rathke from District one twelve. Um, and we learned, uh, the speakers were Representative from CAST, which is the Citizens Against Sex Trafficking. Um, the XQ Institute that was talking about rethinking high school. Um, and then we just had a really robust conversation about, um, public safety and best practices and school district, um, intersection there. Um, let's see, last week on July fifteenth, I shot a promotional video, again with all of those, the four mayors of Eastern Carver County at, um, Bonneville Basket. It, we posted it on Facebook today, so take a look at it, but what I'm not, I'm not here to tell you that we did a video. Um, as you guys know, we talked about that for our night to unite parties, we are going to encourage folks to be bringing, you know, along with their salads and their baked goods and their cookies, to bring a non-perishable food item that the fire department is gonna pick up and that we are gonna donate to Bonneville Basket. When we were there, I was there last Wednesday, I think we met there at about two forty-five and Bonneville Basket was packed. Like, the need in our community was really impactful to me.
With that donation, do they still need like hygiene products?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, they would take that kind of stuff too, or?
So when we were kinda, Vicki and I were kinda working on this and it was, um, they always have a list of kind of most needed items on their website. I think that that's always something that they need. And then like dog and cat food too is also kind of, you know, in that hunger space, if you will, but also like hygiene products, but yeah. Um, and then, let's see.
Excuse me, Mayor. I did.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Um, Andrew and I were just talking, I think one of the things that since we like to win as well for this Bonneville Basket, I think what we'll, we're gonna organize and do a collection spot here at City Hall so that if people have, like, don't go to a block party or whatever, we can, people can, we'll advertise, people can bring stuff to City Hall, then we'll get it to Bonneville Basket, so.
Oh, I love it.
Cheating in the game, isn't it?
I love that.
It's not a rule, so I wouldn't call it cheating.
Are we just gonna collect on nights?
No, we'll like, we'll get a, as soon as we get like a collection system, we'll, we'll collect all the way through the, uh, unite to unite. So if someone comes in next week with, you know, a bunch of food, we can take it and then donate it at the end.
I love it. And like, heads up, council members, we do have a council meeting that Monday night before night to unite, so bring in all your non-perishable food items. I love that. Thank you. Um, and then, um, let's see, today, I don't know if you guys heard, but there was a bear sighting in the city of Carver.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. Did you guys hear?
It's not the DNR, so it doesn't get shot.
It was TC bear. So TC bear was here. Um, Great River Greening has a partnership with the Twins and they were shooting a promotional video that I think might be a part of their game next Wednesday night. So he was cute. They wanted him like really close to Spring Creek and he like kept getting closer and closer. And Spring Creek is flooded and very swollen. I was like, he's a little top-heavy, um, with his head. Um, so it was just really cute and I can't wait to see how it turns out.
We all got bear hugs.
We all got bear hugs. We all got bear hugs, every last one of us. Um, let's see, and then, um, last but not least, I think you guys probably all saw the email, but we got a email from Luke Sandland, who is staff from Representative Emmer's office, letting us know that the transportation appropriation legislation, um, funding tables were released and we are on it for our levy project. So, um, we're still in it for four million dollars. Um, Emmer had his monthly call last week and I asked kind of as far as the next steps. And there are still a few hurdles that this has to pass, but apparently, um, the drop dead deadline is September thirtieth, so. More to come, keep your fingers crossed and hopefully we'll get some money. That is it for me. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by council member Mike.
I'll second.
Second by council member Pershman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.